Legions, I'll face the flag and then if we all do it together, I.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Roll call. Shaw.
Here.
Navara. Johnson. Simone Rogers.
Here.
Travis. Jose.
Here.
Del Ponte.
Here.
And Lopez Caniva.
Here. If you want to make a note.
Johnson.
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 Here.
Navara.
Here.
All right, we'll start with our public hearing.
And before we get into the hearing, I just put a note in your call to order just to draw attention, both to the public and for anybody looking at the agenda, there's something unusual, there are two sets of minutes asking to approve, so just put a preface note in the call to order that every six months, Ms. Maxwell and I do an audit of all of our closed session, all of our minutes. We realized that we had taken minutes for October 2nd, which was a finance and facility committee meeting of the whole. And we also had a closed session, that was a whole board closed session, but we had never, in all of the committee meetings and special sessions, we had, we had never attached those to an agenda for you to approve them.
Oh, okay.
So I just upfront wanted to alert the public in the call to order and alert you later in the agenda that those minutes are there.
Okay.
Why in the world are October 2nd minutes in this, you know, January 11th meeting? So just, just as a preface, sorry to interrupt Ms. Lopez Caniva.
No, that's okay. All right, so I hereby open the waiver for drivers at B hearing at 6:33. All right, at this special open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during this public hearing regarding the waiver for driver ZB. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30 available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board, however, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. Do you have any speakers? Oh, I'm sorry. No, there are none. So hearing that there is no speakers, I can, I hereby close this waiver for driver's Ed B hearing at 6:34. All right, public hearing, PE waiver, I hear, I hereby open the PE waiver hearing at 6:34. At this special open meeting, members of.
And Ms. Lopez Caniva, you probably have to, I just want to check with Dr. Christopher, I know you'll actually vote on this.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, anything you want to amplify, Dr. Christopher, I just, I know you provided the board with information, you know, just for the public con, what, you know, what is this waiver? And, you know, just before we close it, just, just for the public, what, what is it that, that we're doing?
Are you okay if I stay here after my break?
I think either one, you're just fine.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe just take.
So just a reminder, the driver's education fee waiver allows us to charge $250 per student. I explained to you last month that we still, it just helps to free the cost to the district and that you have to approve this waiver every two years.
Thank you.
And if you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that next, you know. Okay, then, goes away.
All right, at this special open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during this public hearing regarding the PE waiver. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30 available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board, however, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of, lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. And there it is, not. Sure, yes, please.
So this, the PE waiver, it comes up every five years. We last voted this abort LTHS border data in 2019. And what it does is it just says students can have driver's education count as their PE so that they can have additional classes, right? So that's what this allows.
Speakers, I hereby close this waiver for driver's Ed B hearing at 6:36.
Can we come in?
Yes, you can come in.
Is this the waiver where the one mom, our daughter was taking AP?
Uh, no, this is, that is actually not a waiver. That is state statute, and there's, there's two pieces you can, for physical education. Substitution of physical education, it's sometimes called waiver of physical education, but no such thing exists. We have it in board policy, but the state has indicated, without board action, just by state school code, by your policy, what are substitutions for physical education that you can make? For example, Ms. Del Ponte is at Wilco, she's in a career vocational coursework. She could use that to waive physical education or substitute is the appropriate. It's something for you to say, I'm going to substitute for physical education. If a student cannot graduate on time and needs to substitute a graduation requirement, the state permits a substitution of a graduation requirement. If a student's in marching band, student can substitute physical education as well. If a student is applying to an institution of higher learning and has to meet certain requirements, the example I always give is you want to go to the Vanderkook School of Music, you want to go to Juilliard. And those very fine institutions require an individual to take band, something like a music theory and choir. You have to do three music classes even to qualify, you can substitute physical education. Substitute that for physical education. The other side is something called a medical exemption, which a medical exemption for physical education can be a lump. It can be more ongoing, a student can, can have a medical exemption if that, if she or he has a situation where they can't participate in, in physical education. So the parent that we saw earlier in the year would, would, would fall into that and actually right now is falling, you know, on one of those. So this waiver is just allowing, this one you have to approve where you're, you're saying PE can satisfy the physical education requirement.
So you're saying that, that AP doesn't come under.
Advanced placement, if I, if I just want to take advanced placement or I'm taking five advanced placement classes, it's very, it's highly pressurized. That is not a substitution for physical education itself. So, under, under state law. Or, or, and that's in your board policy as well. So what, what happened in that case, and obviously, you know, I'm, I'm in public, I don't particularly want to delve into the particulars of a student case without, you know, revealing, but, you know, what I'd say, Ms. Johnson, is when we, when that parent spoke with us, actually after that public comment, when, when we spoke, the, the parent was looking, was calling it waiver, just wanted it waived. And when we actually sat down and I heard more and more about her daughter's situation, I was able to say to her, well, you're looking at that board policy, actually, there's something else over here that really fits your situation. You're, and I understand what you're, you're asking, but let me walk you through, let's work with you. And, and here's a part of board policy and state school code that we can use, that was just a piece that, that she wasn't even aware of.
So we were able to deal with it?
Right.
I just.
No, it's a great follow-up.
Still calling it waiver, still calling it waiver.
You know what the thing is, you ask a very astute question, everyone calls substitution for physical education a waiver? That's kind of, but you wouldn't see that in state school code, you won't see it in your own board policies, it's just how people have started talking about it. You know, this.
Common language, you know.
This is actually a waiver, right? You know, so.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, moving on to public comments. At each open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30 available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board, however, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. And there are none. All right, superintendent report.
Okay, well, I want to preface my report this evening with just a few things, one, a public service announcement I shared with President Caniva. We will take a school closure tomorrow. And just for the board and for the public as well, I have a few emails already, we had to share with the public that, that tomorrow will not be an e-learning day. And we have a number of families from, from East Campus who have emailed me and they're absolutely right, they've said, my child never took an e-learning day at all this year, why are there no, or e-learning days? The reason for that is we did take, you can have a maximum of five emergency e-learning days. When we did the emergency closure of Central, we used those. Dr. Christopher and I spent many an hour, her more than me, working our way up from the regional office of education to the Illinois State Board of Education and then me, all the way up to the state superintendent, to, to appeal the idea that if our freshmen used emergency learning days, why does that count for everyone? And as a matter of fact, there is state statute now, post pandemic, that if we deny in-person learning, even if it's through an emergency closing, if we deny in-person learning to any group of students, then, and use something like emergency e-learning, it counts as a full emergency day. So we appealed that as far as we could, but we have used our five emergency e-learning days, so tomorrow is a, is a pure snow day. We'll have to make that up one way or the other, Mrs. Kishline has been good enough to, to acknowledge that, work with us, be in dialogue with us, I think she's done a great job communicating, we've done a great job communicating that our, our staff understands that. For many of our students, especially our seniors, this will actually be their first pure career snow day, where our school is closed. You might also, as board members, say, why are you closing, Dr. McBride? I am a doctor of education, I'm not a doctor of meteorology, all right, so I'm certainly as prone to as much error as any weather person. But just to educate the board on how we do this, the National Weather Service in Chicago, interestingly enough, we get very good readings because all of its gear is in Romeoville. What they do is when we have these weather events, they begin sending out what they call the decision-making packet, and then we do a webinar. This afternoon, things very dramatically changed, they are predicting, and they have sort of a color coding, it's all about color coding, right? You know, of green, orange, yellow, red, purple. In the next 24 hours, we're about to experience red and purple conditions. In the morning, between 2:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., they're predicting anywhere between, and it's all about timing, right? Not just about accumulation, they're predicting in our area, anywhere from three to six inches. And that's right when we're coming in, and obviously, we have a very different bus operation. We're all coming here, we're then going to North, we're bringing kids back, so that, that should be going on right when we're coming, coming in. We'll be, you know, up against whatever county and municipal plowing is going on. Things should warm up, they're saying, a little bit of rain, but then, starting at about 12:00 p.m., even more extreme, sort of red and purple conditions, blizzard conditions tomorrow evening, very intense. Some, some very strong warnings have been put out. So looking at that, at first, we thought about an early dismissal, but then, as I reflected on that updated report, I began to think, bringing everybody here, if the, you know, prediction is as it is, everybody fights to get here, only to early dismiss. And it just seemed more judicious and more safe. All of our feeder districts are decided at about 3:00 o'clock today to close, so that's significant because older brothers and sisters, if we stayed open, would be coming to school, so we could predict some low, low attendance. Every school district north of us is, made that decision to close as well. Joliet is closed, in, in advance of us, Valley View is closed. Downers Grove is closed, LaMonte is closed, so that's happening all around us, District 230 is closed. And our colleagues in Lincoln Way.
That's what I said, I was just asking, are our students closed and she's like, no?
I would say, you know, I agree with my colleague Scott Tingly in, in Lincoln Way, I do believe, you know, old school, sometimes waking up and looking at the weather at 3:00 a.m. is, is the best way to do this. But I, I also understand the perspective of our elementary schools, where, you know, they're thinking about little ones struggling out into the snow, trying to get on buses, they're trying to tell their teachers in advance. And for those elementary schools that have e-learning, that is a more significant setup. And, and, and sometimes their students aren't used to taking their e-learning equipment home. So I understand that for a parent, if you're asking a third grader to e-learn, there's more setup. So I, so I get, I perfectly understand why they're coming in early. Could we be wrong? Of course, that, that could be the case. But at the end of the day, you know, just safety, buses, we rely on buses, we have a lot of transport going right now and I would just rather be safe. I also want to be considerate of our staff, you know, driving in conditions that they might, might face as well. Right on the horizon, it is supposed to be right now, on Tuesday morning, when we reserve school at 7:00 a.m., minus 13 degrees standing. But I suppose I would rather go, you know, the snow versus.
Arctic.
Right, right, yeah, I think the, the cold, we can probably handle. Had a great institute day on, on Monday, you know, just really grateful for a couple of things. We had so many of our, our colleagues presented, that was wonderful, it was great to see colleagues presenting to each other, really outstanding. You know, just fabulous, really, we couldn't have done such a quality institute day without people presenting. Anne Lopez Caniva was there, Zion Navara was there. Then in our, in general session, we had nine students, all of whom, you know, they applied to be student board members, but are superintendent advisory council exec board, they did a fine job presenting to staff. And then I also want to thank Angela Adolf and the foundation, they named two maroon apple winners, Chris Garland, biology teacher at Central, and then Colleen Martin, who really is just an outstanding horticulture teacher here, here at East. And then a special acknowledgement to our grounds maintenance and custodial crew for their move to Lincoln Way North. So that was just, just outstanding, all right? So really, really a, a great day. I want to just kind of jump into a few things, I apologize, I think there's a power cord down there, thank you very much. Because I just realized I'm low on power, so I might have my assistant assist, thanks, thanks, thanks so much. Don't want to whap you in the face with a thing. A couple of things I just want to touch on tonight, one is the change of the bell schedule at Lincoln Way North. We have made a change to the bell schedule to elongate the day. And that is, is the first of maybe, maybe future changes. You know, the name of the game is what we're trying to do is add instructional minutes. We want to be judicious, we don't want to play around with the schedule and be capricious with the schedule. But what we're trying to do is make sure that if we make changes to the schedule, to make the day longer, we actually can do it with our buses. What we don't want to do is to make changes to the schedule and then have to backtrack. So for example, we made changes to the schedule, but two days this week, not a single bus made it because of weather to Lincoln Way North when we wanted to start. Now, that could just be a weather circumstance, right?
Right.
And not, not permanent, but until we can really understand if we can make the day earlier and later and make that work for everybody, you know, we might even elongate it more. Kind of an aspirational goal would be to get to 40 minutes, 41, 42 minutes per class period. I think teachers would welcome that, students would welcome that, parents would welcome that. So just any questions about that? I don't want to put Mrs. Kishline on the spot, but you're with us tonight. You might say, I'm just sitting in, Dr. McBride, but we, we didn't have you formally on the agenda, anything on your mind?
No, I'm just sitting in, listening.
Okay, all right. I want to thank her, as the board knows, we've been doing interviews for Mr. Kandari's position and, and, you know, and as in all matters, like Mrs. Kishline and, and many of our union leaders have been just great partners in, in trying to make that very important decision. And there are also board members might notice, we don't have our usual complement of people, I did tell our principals, because they didn't have a report tonight. Mr. Dusterhoff has a weekend engagement that he flew out early for, and Mrs. Croy was supposed to drive tomorrow to pick her daughter up at university, or take her there, excuse me, and she's leaving tonight, so I hope that's okay. Just want to dive into the process, where are we at with ceilings at, at, at Central Campus? Just kind of put this in front of you and put this in front of the, the public as well. The progress we have so far, DLA has completed their architectural plans to remove those ceilings. And so now we are going to put out the bid specifications. So we have to have a period of time where construction companies can bid on that work to remove those ceilings. So that's where we're at timeline-wise. And just to remind the board where we're going, is once those ceilings are removed, you know, unless you feel differently and direct me differently, we are going to have P's and Bors, structural engineering associates come in. And, and since we have those ceilings removed, it's an ideal time to look up into those ceilings. They'll need time to do that, write a report, and then from that, we'll have a reconstruction plan, reconstruction of those ceilings, bid it out. You know, in essence, like I said to you in December, right now, you know, unless the board feels differently and wants to move things along very quickly, we feel like it's, it's best to do it right, rather than do it quickly, although that looks more and more like students will not return to Central this year, just because of, of that. Any questions about that? I think what's going to make this just a little bit longer is to pause to have structural engineers do a visual inspection of all those removed ceilings, to see what they say.
So just to reiterate, it's most likely students will not return to Central this year.
That, that, right now, Mr. Navara, with the pace of, you know, introducing the structural engineers, and that, that's also going to, we're going to have to make a decision, do you put a very quick ceiling up, then if there was a renovation of Central? If the referendum is successful, you might be pulling that ceiling down. So what we're thinking is, let's, let's do it properly from the word go, that's just going to take extra time.
How about for next year? Still up and moving?
That, well, that's, you're, you're anticipating exactly, I, I just have this hot off the presses. So I believe it was Mrs. Johnson, where our December 18th meeting, so my number three is cost estimates for a five-phase renovation of Central. After your question about that, you, you did ask, well, what about the future, would Lincoln Way North be available in the future? We did have, we did have DLA, just if, if the referendum passed, as you proposed, $85 million in bonds. And one of the things I'm doing is just explaining, you know, I know you know, the public might not be aware. You know, very, I, I don't know many people who bought their house in cash. And I don't know many people who added an addition on their home or renovated their home in cash. Many people are familiar with taking on a mortgage or a home equity loan. And what your referendum is asking, $85 million in bonds, is, is taking out debt that you would pay over 20 or 25 years, just kind of clarifying that. So taking a look at that, DLA focused, really while we had winter break, on, first off, how would you approach that renovation? They would recommend you'd, you'd start at the top, you'd start with the ceiling and the roof restructuring. You'd, you'd work your way into windows, you'd work your way into HVAC, you'd eventually get into moving classroom by classroom. And you'd probably be doing classroom renovation while students are in session. Moving math classes down the hallway here or to the library, renovating them, moving, moving people around, probably the most difficult of biology classrooms. So if you phase that out over five years and you make some estimates of inflation and you adjust for inflation, they did cost out, there's a few things before I formally present it to you that we have to look at. But, but DLA Architects is right now projecting that we might have $80, $8 million over $85 million. So it's cost to revolve over a five-year period. That is just to have a, a, a starting look at what some potential additional costs could be. There's quite a bit of conversation, mainly online, that, that is dramatically underestimating the cost of, of renovation construction or new construction. Just to give you an example, our colleagues at Mill and Kelvin Grove, they passed a referendum, they went into bidding. They went into bidding. The bids came in much higher than they thought. So they're taking a pause in their planning to do some replanning that will match the amount they went out for referendum, which just kind of gives you an idea of right now how high, especially new construction, costs are. So the next thing I've asked DLA to do is really to answer your question, Ms. Johnson. If you had students at Lincoln Way North longer, if the referendum passed and they were there longer, what ground could we really gain to save money, you know, to outrun inflation basically? And they're working on that now. What I've shared is unless in eighteen months we can really gain quite a bit of ground, then my recommendation to the board if the referendum passed would be to keep this five-year plan. And then financially look for ways that we can meet those inflationary costs. One benefit about renovation is one option you have is you begin looking at your renovation. You have to deal with the roof, you have to deal with the windows, you have to deal with the HVAC. You want to update the electricity. Americans with disability. But if costs are outrunning the funds you raised through a loan, you might start saying, well, we're not going to do this part of the project. We're not going to do that kind of project. It's a real advantage over new construction, because once you say you're going to build a building, you have to build that building, right? There's really, any questions about that? That was kind of part of my report, Mr. Navarro, and I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, that's cool.
Great. And then finally, I just want to, just a really quick referendum update. And one thing I want to do, if this isn't too long-winded, but just for all of us, everyone in the room, and especially for the public, sort of remind folks, and I hope I capture your thinking correctly. How did you get here? You know, how did you get to this spot where you made a decision to ask the community this important question? Should Central remain a school? One, you're asking that as a referendum, you're asking the community, what should we do with this building? And then two, you're asking the community, should we take out an eighty-five million dollar loan that you would pay the principal and interest on over twenty, twenty-five years in order to make it a viable school building? How did you get to that proposal? You wish that, you wish a ballot could be multiple choice and put three or four options, and the highest option is the one that you go with, but, you know, unfortunately, elections don't work this way. But just to remind you of this journey, there's a long journey and there's a short journey. The long journey is in 2020, when we were in the pandemic, we did a structural analysis, a full structural analysis of Central. That's posted on our website. There were two outcomes of that. The first outcome is that we needed about a half million dollars worth of work. And you did all of that work, about, did it all in the summer of 2021. The second outcome of that was kind of a warning that the building was sound, the building was structurally intact, but systems inside of the building, boilers, electricity, roof, merely because of age, could be prone to failure. And then, you know, we saw that in the fall in real life. That then motivated us to do a demographic projection. We asked ourselves, let's take a look at the next decade of who's coming to our district before we make any decisions. The demographic projection that you received has been right on target for the past two years. You received it in 2022. Our demographer said, you're not really going to go up really high. You're going to go to about four thousand two hundred. You're not going to go really low when you dip. But Jerome McKibben said, you're going to see different students. Their learning needs will be different, their backgrounds will be different. He pointed out to you how incredibly one of the five most diverse districts he's worked with in thirty-five years. That got you thinking about the importance of a freshman center. And seven public feeder districts coming in, you felt based on that demographic projection, that you were very committed to the idea of a freshman center. The next phase that we are in is we kind of look backwards at the elections that the district had had in the past. Two thousand six, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand eleven. In that period of time, two things were proposed. One was a full nine through twelve high school, four hundred and seventy-one thousand square feet. There also was a last-ditch proposal of a freshman-only building, a two hundred thousand square foot freshman building. And you, as a board, said to our architects, just for interest, if we took those exact architectural plans that the board paid for and the board has, and today we built those structures, we could build those structures, offer that to our community, what would the cost be? The full nine through twelve high school costed out at about a hundred and eighty to two hundred million dollars. The freshman-only two hundred thousand square foot building costed out to about a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and fifty million dollars. And you, as a board, as you publicly considered that, felt that that was too much of a tax burden on the taxpayer. We did some preliminary projections, saw it to be about six hundred to eight hundred dollars per average household. You asked yourselves, what would be a true-to-a-freshman center, more economical for the community? And then even this fall, when we came back to you with a ninety-five million to a hundred and fifteen million dollar full renovation, atrium, redone cafeteria, new library, you felt that that was asking the community too much. Yet DLA Architects come back, and in October, they brought you a proposal for an eighty-five million dollar renovation. I'm only sharing that just to bring the public up to speed with. You could say four years' worth of considering options, but in many ways, if you start the counter at two thousand and six, it's almost twenty years of consideration. And I think one of the things that you felt is six times the community has rejected new construction. You didn't really see any signs that it had an appetite for the cost of new construction or some of the politics that comes with it. Is that, is that an act, I hope I did an accurate summary of where you've been so far. So a few things, you know, just want to walk through renovation versus new construction. There's just, in this area and the costs in this area, both the hard costs and the soft costs, I know that some people have put out on social media that new construction is less expensive than renovation. It's very hard to find a project where that is actually the case. One of also the benefits of cost in renovation is you have more control of saying, we can ease back on certain aspects of a renovation in order to save costs. It's very difficult to do once you start building a new facility. Another thing I would just point out and just remind both the public, we have right now, we're sort of in a community situation where we, we have a thousand students that do not go to school in our community. They are going, you know, that dramatic fact that we have a thousand of our students going to school in someone else's community, time is not on our side for new construction. We need a building now, and just, you know, thinking through that. There are implications, you know, people have asked me about building in our property in Homer Glen and building behind East Campus. Homer Glen, one of the implications is this building that we're in right now is the largest water and sewer user in Lockport. Large public high schools use an incredible amount of water. And the water and sewer situation in Homer Glen is just not clear right now. As someone who might develop on that property, you obviously have to have water and sewer. You also have to have ample police, you also have to have electrics, the other things, but you have to have water and sewer. Behind here, actually in two thousand eight, that was studied, there were pros and there were cons. But several of the cons, you know, relate to there is a natural waterway, a natural creek running behind East Campus here. If you want to take a look at water and how we handle water, just look right out here over Seventh Street. You'll see a mound. That is actually all of the earth that was dug out to put pro turf in Porter Stadium. But it was placed there in order to mound up and build a retention pond to draw water away, because that's not, you know, a natural surface anymore, to draw water away from the neighborhoods back here. So there'd be quite a bit of work that would have to be done if you ever built anything behind East Campus to ensure that these neighborhoods would not suffer some kind of water issue. So what I guess I'm trying to get to is both sites have some real feasibility issues to consider and to think through.
So the, just to reiterate, those mounds that are over there, they actually serve a purpose?
Yeah, the mound that's right here, it's just one large mound. It's kind of fun whenever I come out this way, whether kids are sledding. It actually does serve two purposes. It saved the district an incredible amount of money, because all of that, you know, backfill was not hauled away. The district, it was hauled right here. But then it built a natural around it, so there's like a donut ring around it of retention pond, which when it rains, it fills right up. So, you know, just looking at things, I would say you've taken a four-year journey to really, you know, Central remains the most timely and the most cost-effective strategy for you. You know, I know there are some folks on some platforms that are saying, you could build a brand-new building for much less than renovating Central. There are just not, there are not examples in the Chicagoland area where we face the labor, materials, legal costs factored in that that is the case. Just wanted to, yeah, Ms. Johnson.
When you talk about building potentially on East Campus, you talking about a standalone building?
I'm sorry, what?
Standalone building?
Yeah, standalone separate building is what some people have suggested. And DLA Architects, on behalf of the board, looked at that in two thousand eight. It eventually was one of the referendum proposals that did not pass.
We can't put additional, well, put an addition over here, like what we did for the back part of the?
You could put an addition, but you would have to put an addition on for a thousand students. So the square footage of that, you know, would almost have to match, you know, the size of the building. So to give you an example, the capacity, this is about a five hundred and twenty-two thousand square foot facility. Its capacity is two thousand eight hundred. If every room was used a hundred percent of the time, and it's just, it's not possible to do that the way that a modern high school schedule works. You know, if we put students in a single room and they were in the room all day and they never left, you could certainly guarantee that you could fill that room. So practically, the practical capacity is about two thousand two hundred, which really factored out this facility of bringing our freshmen in. It gives you a little bit of an idea of how much, if you did an addition, you would have to add to house a thousand new students in it. It would be as large as a new standalone building, so.
And people that are proposing adding a new facility on this campus, I believe what I've seen is they've only been presenting like classroom-only structures. So I don't think that they're taking into account the stressors that having those students use this facility, the cafeteria, the athletic facilities, any common spaces, what that would put onto this building. Because there's no time in the school day or space to add students for lunch and PE.
Right, and what we, right, what we haven't even talked about is there is a real space issue here at East Campus. You exactly are correct. Cafeteria, meeting rooms, classrooms are used by multiple people. Our athletic facilities, although they might seem very, very ample, you, if you're here after school, you'll see students practicing in K hallway, practicing in the cafeteria, practicing in hallways, dance, sometimes soccer, sometimes conditioning, because there's so many students involved in activities. So the stress of putting a thousand students there without any of the support facilities, the stress on this building would be incredible and relatively not practical.
Plus, I mean, I think we had that traffic study done, and that was another issue too. When you have, you know, a thousand students coming in, then you have extra buses, and it would just be.
Right, and you, it's not that it can't work. It's that you certainly can make it work, right? You know, you might have freshman-only traffic off of division. But, you know, right now, we put a lot of stress on the system, even with our busing, bringing everybody here now. If you made that a permanent condition, bounded by two-lane roads, it's just going to be that more congested. And, you know, it's become a, it would become a fact of life, you know? That's just the way that we would have to treat it. I think it also comes back to, does the community would have to ask? Right now, I'd ask you as board members, I could be very, very narrow-minded on this, but does the community have the appetite for the cost of the construction? I know that I've, you know, received emails and reports from people that believe new construction would cost much less than renovation. Like I said, I just, I can't find any comparisons or projects that have been done that in the Chicagoland area that meet that. Does the community have the appetite for that cost? Is one of the things I think drove you to think Central would be a viable option. Also, if you did a renovation on this building, you built a standalone building, you would still have Central Campus.
Exactly, that was by other companies, yeah.
And one of the questions I received quite a bit is, well, developers would buy it, or the city would buy it, or the Park District, or both the city and the Park District would buy it. And I would just ask anybody watching the live stream or the audience, just to back up for a second and ask yourself, if you were a developer and you were hoping to take a structure like Central, convert it into something new, make an investment. So, you know, obviously, you're not doing this non-for-profit organization. Would you take on a building that has forty million dollars worth of heating, electric, window, roofing? Would you, would you do a forty million dollar renovation if you were looking to create condominiums? Plus, it has a gym structure, it has a pool in. How, would that really be attractive to you? I think, I think it would not be. The city of Lockport has looked into that, it's not found that that would be attractive. You know, I've shared with the board before, and the community should be aware, structures like Central, if not renovated, really are slated for demolition. There's just, without proper renovation and preservation, there's just not a use. I remember I shared with you, superintendent I connected with in Spokane, Washington, fifty-four school buildings, and they're only renovating their vintage buildings. They've had such success renovating, cost-wise and community-wise, that they're not even considering new construction for replacement of buildings. So just an interesting professional connection.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Thank you, thank you. And yes, I just wanted to also give a little report here as far as the teacher institute that Mr. Navarro and I attended on Monday. But yes, just wanted to let the board members know that we had a lot of our teachers, staff members come up to us to thank us, you know, for everything that we've done, you know, regarding, you know, Central. And they are very appreciative, and they thank us for our support, so, all right? Just wanted to do that. All right, moving on to our, I'm sorry.
I don't know if you guys relate, um, you are, you going around talking about the potential, the renovation, right? Okay, so, and I apologize, I missed it. You went to Crest Hill?
I did, and I, and you didn't miss it, Ms. Johnson. I missed it, because I did want to tell you that I did go to Crest Hill City Council. That was a great invitation. It was interesting. I went there on January second. I was on the agenda. In my mind, I was, you know, going to try, don't laugh, to talk for ten minutes. Then I discovered I was the agenda. They, they, they had a row bus, you know, they, they wanted me at the podium literally for about forty-five to fifty minutes, and really asked many, 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 many questions. Really wanted to be briefed as a city council and put the time in to do it. Working with Mrs. Adolf and Mrs. Castillo, we do have a calendar, and we'll let you know that calendar, because you should also feel free to be participants in speaking engagements. We're putting that together, you know, to go out, to speak, to do, you know, information only. We can't do politics. Also to, you know, start doing other things through public relations to make people aware of, you know, where the board has been, what the journey has been, what is on the board's mind.
So you did go, right?
I did, yeah.
I said, what I was saying is, I was intending to be there. I missed it.
Oh, shoot. Yeah, it was Jan, it was January second. It was very nice. There were some Lockport Township High School families there that after I spoke and pulled a comment. Bless you. They really supported things. Many alumni on that city council, so a lot of really good feedback from them. But you'll see that we'll have a template. Probably the most important thing is Central at six-thirty. So every Wednesday, six-thirty, we will do tours of Central. If we have one person, if we have twenty people, well, it's a good time for the public to walk through Central right now, even as it's getting under construction, you know, we can work around that. Just to really see the building, what is this building?
Do you say, were they receptive to the information?
I would say that the city council was very receptive and very. I would say that the city council was very receptive and very, and supportive. They were, you know, a number of people vocally supportive.
Just your...
Yeah, it was a very good meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to our approval items, I just need a motion to approve our regular session meeting, can I do this in two, in one vote, I'm sorry?
You could do it in one vote if you wanted to.
All right, we'll do it in one vote. All right, just need a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2023, and the approval of the closed session minutes of October 2nd, 2023.
So moved.
Second, all right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Dr. Simone Rogers. Are there any questions to those minutes? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Zayn, and Ms. Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. All right, next we have the, I need a motion to approve the closed session minutes destruction of verbatim audio recordings dated January 2023 through June 2023.
So moved.
All right, I can second that. It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Lopez Caniva. Any questions to those? All right, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Next, I need a motion for the approval of waiver of school code for physical education.
So moved.
Second, all right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Dr. Simone Rogers. Any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, next I need a motion for the approval of waiver of ISBE Rural Core Driver Education Fee. Motion approved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Simone Rogers and second by Dr. Shaw. Any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, information report.
All right, as Doctors Huntington and Christopher are along, I just wanted to use this opportunity. At our December meeting, our two student board members spoke about this, our student government members, I believe you spoke about it again, Ms. Johnson, about school counselors. And the board has had a conversation, this really stemmed from September 2nd when we met and we briefed about equal opportunity schools. You've heard from our, through our student board members about, from, through superintendent advisory councils, idea and desire and recognition of the value of school counselors and accessing school counselors. Presently, our school counselors have a load of about one counselor for 320 students, and you've been keen on that and recognize the value that counselors add. Draft proposal, this is just getting us thinking, just a first reading, we're not approving anything, just allowing Dr. Huntington and Dr. Christopher to just to share with you an idea that they have for adding two counselors. But also in here, another real need area that we have is multiple language learners. And like every school in the area, we are, that population is growing, Jerome McKibben called it, and how do we meet that need and support our teachers who are doing a great job trying to meet that need? Turn it over to you for your report and let me know if there's any attachments, I know you have the memo, it's attached, if you want me to open something up, I will.
I appreciate it, just to clarify, our counselor loads about 350 students per counselor currently, yes, I know.
Sorry to be off, it was quoted by someone earlier.
It's a big, it's a big difference, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's a very big difference.
So, I think the goal, obviously, you know, the conversations that we've been having here and that I've been hearing you have with each other, it clearly indicated to me that I needed to do a little work and do a little digging in, and so I spent the time during break kind of going through information and looking at different kind of ways that we can approach this. And obviously, you know, coming forward by additionally adding counselors to our repertoire would be to all students' advantages. One area of concern that we've had has been our kind of at-risk or specialty programs, things like our Lockport Academy as well as our Park Program, which has really been instrumental in improving graduation outcomes for our students that struggle, has really seen an increase in the amount of students that have been attending that. And what we're finding is that those high-intensity needs need more direct counseling support than maybe some other students who don't have some mental health issues that they're dealing with or hospitalizations or returning back to school. And so, we wanted to try to look at this opportunity to reduce the caseload of our counselors, but also to provide somebody that has an advanced kind of knowledge about working with adult, or working with other agencies, outside agencies to coordinate that care, and we felt that we could do that with kind of a little pilot, kind of focusing one counselor on making those kind of connections and working with people. So, that one counselor would probably have a caseload of 150 to 200 students, so less than the other counselors, but they would be working out of both buildings and they would be pushing into those programs to do direct counseling. That, those students coming off the caselots of the other counselors and their numbers coming down, we feel would really increase the amount of direct access that students can have with their counselors to do that rich four-year planning that we're hoping that they'll do. Anybody have any questions about that proposal? Okay. Then, secondly, we wanted to talk about our EL learners, and I brought my data guru over here to kind of speak to a little bit about how we've been using the current teaching staff, yes?
I apologize to interrupt you. Just want to catch you a little bit before, just for the board, there is a memo that's attached very quickly, we don't have to delve into this, but I think it is helpful as we come, try to come to a decision about this. The memo that Dr. Huntington prepared for you about counselors, it does this comparison, you know, of different districts and counselor loads, you can see where ours is. It also shares with you, you know, our size, based on the proposal that Dr. Huntington just outlined, where would the new sort of load be? It would be about 295 to 300. So, just want to point out that memo for future reference, we'll be coming back to it quite a bit. Sorry to break your flow.
No, no, that's totally fine.
So, we only need to...
Well, you know, we can need as many as we want to need, but I think that we feel that two counselors would be sufficient to get those caseload numbers down and then looking at kind of that level of specificity for students with more at-risk needs.
And bringing it down to, what'd you say, 295?
295 to 300, you know, and that's, it's going to vary, we try to block things by alphabet, right? So, one counselor might have 290 and another one might have 305, you know, just kind of depending on the alpha splits and how things go.
So, that'd give us a total of how many counselors?
So, that would be a total of 13 counselors.
Would both of these counselors be going at East or one in Central?
So, one, one would travel, so one would be kind of a traveler, they would be here at East Campus, working with the students in the Park Program, and then they would go over to Central and have a small caseload of freshmen and then students at our Academy Program. Just thinking outside, we're outside of the box. And the other counselor would be at East full-time, yes.
Are they going to be expected to travel if we were still going to stay at North for next?
Just, we've got teachers traveling right now, you know, even at North, so that's part of having a two-campus kind of school, yeah.
And just one, one sort of equity piece, I can understand where Ms. Osay is going is by adding two counselors is a benefit to both Central and East because the addition of those two counselors lowers every counselor's load, right? So, even though it's a two-building model, it still would bring everyone's load down by the introduction of two new people. So, there was some, I think when we talked about some of these concerns initially, some that folks were thinking exactly what you might be thinking, Ms. Osay, if there was just these two counselors here at East, great for counselors at East, what about our counselors at Central? This would bring loads down across the board.
I mean, I have another question because I know we've always talked about space issues here at East. Will there be office space for this?
Yeah, we will figure it out. I mean, obviously, we can reconfigure some spaces, there are some not-so coveted office space in the guidance office down here at East that we can reconfigure, freshen up and utilize as we need to. The traveling counselor, you know, we want that person to be pushed into those programs. So, as far as an office-type space that's necessary, they would have the space, but it probably wouldn't be as luxurious as some of the other counseling spaces because they wouldn't be utilizing it as much as the counselors that are in the guidance office. Yeah, nobody's going to be sitting on anybody's lap, we won't have shared office space, we'll figure it out.
Or put them in a closet.
Yeah, well, there is, yeah, I'm always looking at like the registrar area, you know, the files, like are there ways that we can reconfigure things to provide more access to student space? We're pretty creative.
If a student that, like, if the guidance counselor is traveling and like is not at the school, if a student is going through like a mental problem, would they be able to go to another guidance counselor?
Absolutely, yeah, they share loads, just like when somebody's out ill, it's not like, well, you're out of luck, your counselor's not here. We have coverage plans, so we would probably schedule that traveling counselor very specifically, like they would probably be traveling, we would know that they'd have set days of traveling and then a social worker at this campus or another counselor at this campus would cover any load that would, any immediate need that could occur. Also, the way kind of counseling works, sometimes when there is a problem, I could be like, okay, I'm scheduled over here at Central, but I've been called and there's a need over at East, I'm going to come back to East and manage and support the students that are here. So, that flexibility is kind of built into the job, yeah. Thank you.
Did you get a chance to talk about ELL?
We're doing it right this very second.
Yeah, not leaving the table, you know.
I interrupted her.
Yeah, that's okay.
No, you're good.
I was asking Dr. Christopher to kind of talk a little bit about some data that we wanted to share with you that wasn't necessarily in my little report, so this is kind of warrants why we're looking at more teacher FTE in ELL.
Yeah, so I just shared with Dr. McBride, you know, we're at the end of first semester, so we're regularly doing some data dig to see where students might need some additional supports this semester. And so, working with Dr. Jen Webb Ray, Dr. Jason Asvold, because, you know, we're digging into it, we found some exciting stuff, right? The exciting stuff was that we had approximately 98% pass rate across the district for first semester, and really exciting was our students' limited English proficiency or our English language learners had a passing rate of about 94%. So, that was really exciting to us. That is down from 2020, the 21, 22 school year, or I'm sorry, the 1920 school year, and I'm looking at some data right here where we had like a failure rate of like 13% of that population, and so now I'm telling you we're down to about a 6% failure rate. You know, our teachers are working really hard, we've reported to you several times that we're having an influx of more newcomer students, and so we're always looking like what kind of supports do they need? One thing that we've done, and this was a shift that we made in the 21, 22 school year, is we started instead of having students who were EL students in sheltered classes away from their peers, we started doing a co-teaching English model where they had the English teachers in the classroom teaching them content about literature and writing, things like that, and then an EL teacher partnering with them. And we've seen a drastic decrease in our failure rate for our EL students in that area through doing this co-teaching model. In 2021, this was right before we started that, we had a failure rate of 20% for students in their English classes who had limited English proficiency, and then we are down to about 3.5%. So, if we compare that with some of our other classes, math, science, where again, there's a movement that we're putting more students in classrooms with their peers and our teachers are doing the best to modify and accommodate for them, but if they had a co-teacher in there, we might see increased progress. English, again, 3% failure for students with limited English proficiency, but we saw 15% in math failure, 17% in science. So, having additional EL certified teachers to provide support with co-teaching might be a good solution, we definitely see a need with the increasing population.
Correct. And then, obviously, this is a, I don't want to say it this way, but it's a cutthroat game out there in trying to find EL teachers that are qualified, that can meet the needs of our students, and of course, we want to try to find somebody who's bilingual to better support our students as well. So, the reason why this is coming so early, much earlier than we would usually ask, is I want to get a jump on it, I want to get the best candidate that we can to support our students and to be able to onboard that person and then get them up and running, you know? Right now, we've been really fortunate, we have a lot of teachers that have some EL endorsements and we've kind of bag-borrowed and steals from other departments, but as we see numbers increase, those departments are going to need their teachers back to teach their content area as well. So, we wanted to just get ahead of things and get on, get on with the recruiting and activities with Mr. Kandari still here to get things moving in that direction, so that's the rationale for that, we have a need. Any questions about EL?
Is there any way to urge our teachers that are already here to get EL endorsements or have a good pathway to it or something?
We do have quite a few teachers that are in progress or in process
Oh, good.
of getting their EL endorsement, and that's great. I think the piece that we're missing as part of our puzzle is that bilingual piece. As we get more and more English newcomers, Spanish speakers mainly, you know, we may find ourselves having a need to do some bilingual courses, and so we want to kind of get ahead of it.
Would you also do, like, I have a friend who's in EL, the English class where it's like dual, like there's a co-taught? Is there a way to do it in math, too?
That's, that's, that's why we're looking at, like, how can we do that? Yeah, what we did for second semesters, because we, you know, obviously there's a need there, we did try to kind of, we changed some schedules of some students to kind of bring them together, we provided some peer professional support to push into those classes so they're not being pulled out of the classes that
She loves it, that it's co-taught, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we do make every effort to see what we can do, but obviously, having a teacher would be our number one, you know, that's our big ask, that's our big ask, yeah, so, for sure.
Just for clarification purposes, the difference between an EL, EL endorsement and a bilingual endorsement for teachers, there's a difference. An ELL endorsement is, gives a teacher the ability to teach students that are learning English. A bilingual endorsement means that that teacher speaks the other language and teaches a majority of the classes in that language.
Oh, I see, of course.
So, there's a difference between EL and bilingual. So, it would be great if, you know, your, Mrs. Kishline could, you know, get her EL endorsement, she can go in and help those students, but she couldn't get her bilingual endorsement unless she spoke
Right.
another language, whether it's Spanish or French or something like that. Just wanted to make sure.
So, it's harder to get the bilingual endorsement?
It is, it is, and they are much more of a unicorn than at the secondary level than the ELL.
And as far as the bilingual, what is the greatest need, is it Hispanic or Polish?
Spanish, yeah. The majority of our students that are non-English speakers, the majority are Spanish, however, we are seeing, we've got a huge group of French speakers coming in, which has been surprising to me.
And then Arabic, too.
Ukrainian, Arabic, Russian, Russian is another one that's coming, I mean, we're really seeing a broad spectrum of student need, yeah.
Can you explain the 2.2 teacher FTE?
Yeah, so, what that means is that teachers can teach five classes a day, so that's considered a 1.0, right? So, 1.0 is one, one full-time teacher. 2.2 would be two full-time teachers plus a teacher that's teaching just one period of the day. So, when I kind of broke it out, that 0.6 is coming from a Spanish world language of teacher, that's where I'm stealing that, I call it stealing, I'm not really stealing, but we're utilizing teachers that are in that department. But we're utilizing teachers that are in that department. So they have, they teach here full-time, but point-six is in EL and point-four is in world languages, okay? I have a special ed teacher who, this is, I want to talk about a unicorn. Two classes he's teaching in science, two classes he's teaching in special ed, and one class he's teaching in EL, okay? Because he has that kind of, I know, we're...
Yeah.
Unicorns, right? Utility players, I like to refer to them as, right? So we, we kind of utilize, we, we put together these packages of how teachers are here and then what departments they teach in. So right now, we're anticipating, right now, we have two-point-two teachers, right, in EL. And we anticipate absolutely having a need for two-point-six next year, minimum. Could be more, but we really want to try to focus on getting out there, getting our name out there and, and working all of our leads to get, get a bilingual EL teacher.
Cool.
Thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate it.
So approval of this proposal is, you know, we'll either bring it to you in January, you know, twenty-second, if you're feeling comfortable with it, or if you feel like you need more time on it, we'll go into February.
We have just questions on that.
We're all be okay for the twenty-second. All right. All right, now, do I have a motion to enter into closed session to confidentially discuss litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of a closed meeting under chapter five of the ILCS one-twenty slash two C eleven, and the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity under the ILCS one-twenty slash two C one.
So moved.
Second. It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Dr. Simone Rogers. Roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Yes. Time ended, is it seven thirty-nine? And we'll probably take maybe a five-minute break if you put in one five-minute break.